So, opinion about some of which are legal questions Alex had. I personally feel as if we can't move forward town meeting without legal counsel opinion on some of these. But the general goals of what we're trying to accomplish, let's get people's comments and concerns. Do they support the goals or they don't support the goals? Do they have concerns about some of the details? Let's hear it from them. So Alex, that's my suggestion is rather than go through the detail list, I personally would like to be able to read through all your comments before. I don't think we're going to have adequate time for you to review sixteen pages with us tonight and have a meaningful conversation about it.
Let the public have anything to say.
Right, exactly. We doubt, I mean, the real point of the public hearing is to let the public have their say and give us some feedback. Yes, Brian?
I just, I feel like we need to talk a little bit about, first of all, I want to commend the process. I think we've had three public sessions outside of the planning board meetings that most of us have attended and many people from the public have attended. And I think it's gone a long way to moving some of these bylaws forward. We've made the decision to pull others off for the future, but there's been a lot of time and a lot of effort by a lot of people in this room, both at this table and in the audience, to move some of these things forward. And I take, I think that needs to be recognized. I also think that, you know, I agree with Cheryl, there's a lot of comments here and I don't think any of this should be rushed, but I do think what you're seeing in this process that's coming from a master plan and many, many discussions and planning board meetings, excuse me, town meetings that have happened in the past, is a realization or a slow realization that we're working off of bylaws that were drafted almost a hundred years ago. And they've been modified as we go, but ultimately, there are things that we need to address in our town that can't be addressed under our current bylaws. And I think this is a monumental effort. It's something that certainly can't happen in four months. Cheryl makes a very good point. It's troubling to me that we have not been able to have town council review these. It may be, frankly, that might be a point at which we have to say, if we can't have a town council review these before our recommendations, I'm not sure I'm comfortable recommending any of them without town council review. But I think, I would like the board, or I would like to acknowledge at least my desire and my goal, to start putting an earnest effort into moving these things forward. I must say that there have been many comments at meetings, and many of them have been repetitive, and many of them have been, we need more time, we need more time. That's fine. I think time is okay, but I would like to have more discussion instead of more delay and more postponement. I think Alex is, I also, I very much appreciate your comments. I think your review is exceptional, and I look forward to being able to continue to work on the bylaws with these comments. I think it makes for a much better bylaw and ultimately a much better town in the end. But I think, you know, I think we need to stop trying to resist what I think most people, at least that I've spoken to, realize is something that we need to sort of catch up here with our bylaws.
Mike?
Yes?
I saw you.
I'm only saying this because you just said it offensively, I just said, I don't think that people are necessarily resisting as much as they are fearful that they're trying to fix something, it may make it worse. I think that's more the inclination than resisting. And I know a lot of people here, well beyond me, have put a lot of effort into this, but and I don't know whether it's playing into what Alex was getting at or not, but I think we should formulate these bylaws at these meetings. And in that sense, I think I personally could be more help because we could do a little bit of dividing and conquering. Like when you said a certain thing, a definition of sign, well, you know, you go find six definitions of fine signs. We can, you know, meld them and improve on them and whatever. But I mean, in other words, three or four people should be working on the sign by law. I think it just, not to belabor this, but I see it now, I didn't think as the process goes along, because I'm not a significant input on the process, but it's too much to think that we could do six new bylaws. We should have probably taken the six at the beginning and said, let's focus on these two. The other four are just going to have to, they're just going to have to, like, these are the two that people are most significantly, you know, involved in and want to see happen, the signs being one of them. But again, I think as well, we should, my basic thought is we should be formulating this within these meetings. And when Tim started putting together his lists on different projects we were going through and said, you know, let's look at step one, we should be in here saying, all right, the definition of signs. Where should these signs be allowed? Locations of signs, but we should go through it step by step and hash it out as a board. And then by definition, what Alex said, it can be a bylaw formulated by the board. And I don't mean to, you know, be negative on the significant time and effort to go on it, because that's, it takes somebody to get the ball over.
Brian?
Just two short comments to follow up to what Mike just said. I personally would have no problem working on these bylaws at this meeting. You know, a lot of people are spending a lot of time at home, doing the best they can without this body's knowledge, which I think is, a lot of that time might be wasted without this body's knowledge. So I think I would, I would welcome that opportunity. I think it will require a few things from this board. One is, we won't be ending at ten o'clock anymore if we decide to do it that way. We will be needing to set aside a couple of hours for each meeting to talk about these bylaws if we're going to make any real progress. And I just want to say one other thing, and then I can be done for a while, probably. You know, I just want to address the comment you made at the beginning, that people are afraid of making things worse. There are examples throughout history that that's been the case, and I think that's a very legitimate and real concern, but it's not a reason to not work on these bylaws. And people have to be willing to have a conversation.
And again, that's just real briefly, that's not my intent. When I say people are fearful that we might do something wrong, they're fearful in the sense that you've got seven bylaws in front of you, you started about a month ago, and you're going to present them in October, you're asking too much of yourself. You're heading down a road, asking yourself to fail on something. I mean, we should, we should focus, and when you said time in this meeting, we've gone through projects here that take, they take a while. That's the fear. If it takes a while, it takes a while. And if we have to go through a sign by law that takes six meetings to get to a pretty decent product, that's what it takes.
Let's commit to it then.
And that's, that's the fear, that you don't, you know, give it its time, give it its due, hash it out. And I think this forum is nice in the sense that it's public. And again, that's not to offend the people that spend time at home, that is beyond me that the time that people have to spend at home, but, you know, it's, this lends itself more to the public nature of what we do.
Sure.
Yeah, just to follow up a little bit with what Brian said, I mean, I really, I spent four years on the warrant committee, I know you spent time on the warrant committee, Emily, and we saw zoning articles that really were a result of having inadequate zoning bylaws. And one of the things that inspired me to run to, for a seat on this board, was to make the process more predictable and have it where you work through a public process and you get people to agree that this is the common vision. It's why I volunteered for the master plan committee for two or three years that I worked on that. I mean, it is, it takes time, and these are the next steps in implementing some of the other work that other people in town have done too, for the, like, for example, the housing production plan. There are people who are interested in seeing things move forward and not get stuck on a shelf and not go anywhere. So while the work is hard and maybe we're being too ambitious, I think we have to be diligent, and that's part of what we're here to do. We're not here just to react to people who are coming in with applications, but we're here to put things forward in response to things that we've seen.
Alex, any fallout before we move to the public, and I'll address some of this as well?
I, as I say, I think that a collaborative effort will make for a better product. And as I say again, I've given you my comments, I've put them into a little booklet of seventeen pages. Going through them is not, I don't think it's a productive use of this particular meeting when we've got people in the public who want to be heard. So I would much prefer to hear them and let the board, I mean, the board's had a good discussion, I think. And let's see what the public says.
So I'm going to open it up to the public, but I will just say that I'm in fact delighted by this discussion. So this is pretty much what I wanted to see going forward. So, we're going to open up to the public. I'm going to recognize Mike Mahalchuk first, because he was at Citizenspeak to speak on what he wanted to do. Any of the zoning articles are open. The process, by the way, I mean, you've heard the planning board discuss the process. I am, I believe the other members are very interested in your comments on the process as well as the substance of the zoning itself. So please, Mike, you're first, introduce yourself again for the record, and we're looking forward to hearing from you all.
Once again, I'm Mike Mahalchuk from Five Bunton Street. And I've gotten quite an appreciation for the amount of work you have to do to get a law passed in this town. So I think in my earlier comments, I said I wasn't sure if we should try to start over again for a broad sound ordinance or take what we have and take that as a gain, as a first down instead of a touchdown. So I would be happy to, whatever process is, to share other ideas from the state of Colorado statutes, the city of Newton's ordinances, which are very long, that consider sound. The only thing I want to read into the record is what the city of Newton says is their public purpose for doing this. They made it their policy to present, to prevent excessive sound which will jeopardize the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens, or degrade the quality of life. And the scope is all sound in the town. And it goes on in great detail, exempting dogs barking and birds chirping, which I don't want to get into here. But what, if you read through their bylaw, what is being proposed is actually Article Two, Section Twenty, Thirteen, F seven. So it's progress. We would actually be adopting a piece of Newton's law if we went ahead with two changes. Replacing the word amplified music with electronic devices, and replacing ten decibels above ambient sound with five decibels above ambient sound. So I'd love to find out from the chair how to make a better law, but I don't think I'm going to get it done anytime soon, and I'll take the first down.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak on the zoning articles? Yes. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Tim Kernan, Brushhill Road. I represent, although I'll clarify that, I represent Brushhill Area Neighborhood Association and am a member of the Milton Neighborhood Coalition. Although, tonight I'm speaking on behalf of myself, I've, having spoken to a number of people in my neighborhood and across town, feel that my comments are representative of a broad number of folks, so I don't, not necessarily speaking for those two organizations. While my comments are highly critical, I do wish to express my respect and gratitude to the members of the planning board who've spent many hours, many long hours, working these articles for all the best intentions of the town. The process which has taken place over the past, the past months of the summer, and culminated in these proposed bylaws for consideration by town meeting this fall, has been wholly inadequate. To set aside the summer months, when many Milton residents are vacationing with their families, and paying little attention or no attention to the events at home, for discussing and framing zoning articles which have, will have a significant impact and far-reaching impact upon the town, is shortsighted and disingenuous. Many of these proposed bylaws represent major initiatives and need to be given an opportunity to be fully vetted and evaluated by the citizens of the town. And to some extent, I think that's what you're talking about tonight. I attended all the workshops. The first at Fuller Village was attended by perhaps forty persons, which included planning board members and some from the warrant committee. The second at the high school library was attended by perhaps thirty. And the last at the high school auditorium was attended by less than twenty-five. This, these attendance levels hardly mount to a successful public participation process. The presentation at the first workshop, while conceptually well and good, was completely out of context. The slides of signs at buildings had no relevance. The look and feel of one sign may be great and wonderful in some circumstances in Milton, but entirely inappropriate for another. The presentation was valuable to stimulate discussion, but there was no follow-on discussion relative to context within Milton. The exercise was a dead end. The summer started with ten articles in June. In order to prepare these for town meeting, the selectmen traditionally asked for final wording to be presented to them in early August. However, the planning board sought a deferment to this schedule to gain time needed to finish these articles. This is now September, and these articles are still not in their final form to present to town meeting. The shuffling of the schedule, in effect, shortchanges the public, who deserve every opportunity to study and comment on these. The third workshop, for the most part, was useless. It was simply a review of each of the proposed bylaws followed by questions and answers. There was no constructive discussion on content. It appears these articles were hastily crafted with little collective input. To suggest this process over the summer has been a success is a gross injustice to the citizens of the town. I have a few comments specifically to the bed and breakfast bylaw. While most of us agree that this use may be of interest to some homeowners, the bylaw is weak and does not offer the protection to neighborhoods or neighborhood communities. Let's take Brushhill Road as an example. If several of the homes along this scenic road were to become B and Bs, the bylaw provides for an illuminated sign to be placed in front along the road. This is contradictory to the scenic quality of the road and inhibits or circumvents any neighborhood's interest in preserving that quality of the road. Let's take my house as an example. Suppose I could provide six rooms. I would need eighteen parking spaces per the current draft, three per guest room. Now that may be a typo, but that's what it says. I barely have room to park my own cars, but I would have to pave over some of the backyard, and I'm sure my neighbors would not mind living next to a parking area. The bylaw offers no controls for existing parking areas to meet the demand of the guest room count. Neither does this bylaw offer a, offer a home near public transportation to offer a room to a non-motoring guest. Parking must be provided regardless. Parking buffer areas must include landscaping and be six feet wide. There's no limits to headlight intrusion into neighboring properties, there are no guidelines for fencing. In summary, this proposed bylaw is weak, ill-conceived, poorly thought through, and provides no means for neighborhood control. The non-conforming business use. I asked the planning office if there was a list of non-conforming business uses to which this bylaw would apply. In part, I wanted to see if any attempt had been made to determine to which properties this bylaw would apply. Such a list does not exist, and its lacking tells me that there was no attempt to evaluate the impact of this proposal on the town. I understand, as I understand it, a non-conforming use is a business use in a residentially zoned area for which a variance has been granted for the conduct of business. This bylaw allows such a business to expand through the purchase of adjoining properties. Thus, a variance which has likely been granted to a specific lot may now be applied to adjoining lots such that the business now occupies a larger area in a residential neighborhood than was originally established. This bylaw allows the nature of current business to change. Thus, a neighborhood which is involved with a small convenience store would find this use extinguished and replaced with something altogether different. Single-family residential neighborhoods are for single-family residential purposes. To inject into this neighborhood a development of alternative housing stock and additional commercial space cannot possibly consider complementary and certainly does not, quote, "maintain the physical design characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood." The requirement to have large glass storefronts is certainly not in keeping with the residential neighborhood. There's no control on density. There's no control on traffic, both in terms of vehicular and human, which this development would attract. Hours of operation need to be reasonably set with the neighborhood. There's no limit to the size of a new assembled lot. The allowance of a cupola, cupola, to exceed current height limits and to occupy ten percent of a roof area is certainly out of character and further, is a further imposition on a residential area. There is no limit to the number of new businesses to be allowed or added. The design guidelines are weak or nonexistent, limited only to commercial design standards with little or no standards for other uses. Must a development consist of one building, or may such a development consist of more than one? The proposed bylaw is wholly inadequate. The town does not need a broad brush, wide-open bylaw to address this issue. In an existing non-conforming, if an existing non-conforming business use needs special attention, it can work with the neighbors to craft a special zoning article for consideration on a case-by-case basis for town meeting. It is unfair imposition upon existing residential neighborhoods and should be withdrawn for consideration. Accessory units. I'm all in favor of accessory units, but this bylaw does not cut the mustard. The impact on neighborhoods, as it is written, would be quite negative and, and, missing a word here, no provision, has no, offers no provision for neighborhood or butter input. Additional off-street parking is required, and if none exists, results in a change to the neighborhood, which would not be in its best keeping. There's no limits on the number of such units in the neighborhood. Single-family neighborhoods are in effect converted to multifamily neighborhoods. Additional fences may appear where there are currently none. I think, I can think of one specific example, where cars are normally parked in front of a home, and there's an earth parking area in the back of the house. This bylaw would require the elimination of parking in the front, expanding and paving the rear area, and erection of a visible barrier fence along the property line. This is a gross imposition and a dramatic change to the visual quality of the area. Parking standards are not consistent with the B and B proposal bylaw. By what standard does one determine whether a second door on the front of a house appears secondary? Given a historical significant home with two doors in the front, this bylaw may require otherwise significant architectural changes to be disrupted. In closing, Milton is a unique town, and as we go forward with new planning initiatives, it's critical to do so with a clear and open process, and that we do so with full inclusion and support of the neighborhoods to be affected. In the articles before us, I see little in these proposals. At the public forum on these issues, I raised the concern that this set of proposals were multiple and very complex, and to ask town meeting to digest and rule on them is simply biting off more than can be chewed. The answer I got back was that town meeting members should come to the public hearing. I think it is inappropriate for the planning board to craft complex articles during the summer months, then expect town meeting members to read, research, understand seven complex bylaws covering forty-five pages. Most of these, those, of these proposals are poorly written and flawed. To further suggest that town meeting members will be able to understand why it is, why it is, again, sorry, lost a couple sentences there. Town meeting members are a diligent group, but this is beyond the call of duty. The board should be presenting to the town meeting properly-vetted articles. To add insult to injury, I find it difficult to understand how the board can allocate only forty minutes this evening to the, to a public meeting to discuss these seven zoning articles. The board should cut back. I'd like to add two comments, and then I'm done. The notion of resisting these bylaws came up, and I don't find that particularly the case. I think that legitimate citizens of this town are tremendously concerned about the rapid pace that the, that the master plan is laying down in front of us. I think people are frightened that there's going to be a mass, rolling forward of the master plan without proper due analysis. And secondly, you talked about having this board compose some of these bylaws. While that may be very good, I would suggest that the condominium bylaw subcommittee is an excellent model by which those, those bylaws could be drafted. I think that the concept of using subcommittees is just getting off the ground. Obviously, it's been a long, long effort since we started less than a year ago, but I think it provides a model that the board should look at. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have specific comments to two of the proposed bylaws, and I have copies of red lines that I have prepared with respect to each.
And actually, while you're passing those out, if I could say, anybody, that includes you, Tim, anybody who does have specific comments on the articles, I think whatever we decide tonight, we would be very interested in seeing those, so please forward them on to the planning office.
So I made seven copies.
Is everybody?
So the first is the non-conforming dimensions bylaw that I think Alex had worked on, and my comments are fairly specific. This deals with, and I, and by background, I'm, I am an attorney, do a lot of zoning practice, I know I practiced a lot before this board, I also practiced a great deal before the Board of Appeals, and I'm often hired to take on dimensional variances, seek dimensional variances for modifications to pre-existing non-conforming dwellings, really exist all over town. So my first comment is that it ought not to be restricted to residency zone. An awful lot of building, of dwellings in residence B were built prior to the enactment of zoning. All of Russell Street, for example, is pre-existing non-conforming, that isn't a residence B district. All of the properties that are across the street from me on Morton Road are in residence B. I'm in a residence C. It just happens to be that the, that Morton Road divides the residence. All of the houses across the street from me are pre-existing non-conforming, they all, many of them don't conform for purposes of height or setback or otherwise. I think that the bylaw ought to apply, the modification and the ability to seek special permit as opposed to variance ought to apply to all pre-existing non-conforming dwellings. And then the Board of Appeals would obviously have to apply the standard, that the, that a determination would be that the, be no detrimental impact to the, to the neighborhood or that, and that it would not conform to the general intent of the bylaw. It would remove the requirement that you have to establish a hardship associated with the, with the shape of the land, the topography, or the, or the soil conditions in order to secure a variance to put an addition on a home that might be done within existing setback or existing height. I also think that the, that the modifications ought to be allowed to go to the existing height of the dwelling. It ought not to be artificially set at, so thirty-eight feet as opposed to forty feet. I had a variance hearing on Russell, Russell Street last year where the height of the dwelling was forty feet. And so one plan showed a, an addition that came up to thirty-five feet to avoid the height variance, and the neighbors objected to that. They really thought it was out of character with the rest of the dwelling. So I think that a good architect can work with, with dwellings, there are a lot of dwellings that exceed thirty-five feet, particularly in residence B and C, B and C areas, and I think you ought to be able to work to the existing height, not to be able to go above the existing height, because you're only going up to the, to the limit of the existing So I propose that you would strike the second proviso that, that they are, that other buildings within three hundred feet have similar non-compliances. Neighborhoods get built in different ways. You ought not to be bound by, you know, if you're making modifications to a dwelling, you ought to be able to make the modification to the dwelling within the existing, limits of existing non-conformity. And so that's my, my recommendation on the non-conforming, and the language that I've come up with is, modifications to languages as I proposed. The second deals with non-conforming business use zoning. This is a, this is a proposal for bylaw that initially I had worked on and provided a draft to members of the board some months ago. Marian McKetrick and I had shared comments back and forth. I have, by disclosure, I have two clients that own property that are pre-existing non-conforming. They are not pre-existing or non-conforming by reason of variances. They are buildings and uses that pre-existed zoning, and they have continued forward based on that pre-existing condition. In some cases, non-conformities are, have been expanded over time by special, by permits granted by the Board of Appeals, and the board is authorized to grant extensions of non-conformities. The best example would be, I guess, the Copeland property and the, flanking on the breakfast, lunch restaurant, it's
Newcombe?
Newcombe Farm. Newcombe Farm started as a small milk stand. It's been expanded It's been expanded, uh, over time by expansions of special permits that have been granted by the board most recently, three or four years ago. Um, the, the original, uh, Pepsi bottling plant was a small bottling plant. Expanded over time with expansion of special permits that recognized that an increase in the size and capacity of the building was appropriate and fit the neighborhood. It was done, uh, under a special permit. What I think has happened, and, and that's sort of its own unique property, but there are a number of small properties, uh, Tedeschi's on Houston Avenue, for example, um, which now is, it's still called Tedeschi's, although Seven-Eleven has recently purchased all of Tedeschi's. So whether and how Tedes, Seven-Eleven might repurpose that property is a question. They'll put their own logo. They may try to do some basic improvements to the building, but that building takes up about ninety-five percent of its lot. The only, there's about two feet on either side of the building to the lot line, and there's a very short, there's a sidewalk in front, and it's set back a little bit from the street. There is no parking. There's no delivery service zone, and the properties on either side of it suffer significantly because they really can't reinvest in themselves. And I represent one of those butters who has sought over time to try and figure out how to reinvest. One way to reinvest would be through a, uh, a, an, an, an assembly of property, his property and the Tedes, and now the Seven-Eleven, in a reconfiguration of the commercial on that lot that would be, be, continue to serve as a neighborhood amenity, would create parking off-street, would create delivery area off-street, would absolutely have to be done in conjunction with neighborhood process because in order for the Board of Appeals to, or this board to grant a special permit to allow that to happen, there would have to be a clear consensus among the neighborhood that it's, that the design is right, that the, that the uses or the combination of uses is correct. Uh, I think there is, there are adequate safeguards built into the language of this. I have, um, specific comments that I would ask the board to consider, uh, as it goes forward. I also, uh, represent the owners of property in Blue Hills Parkway, um, which is where Blue Hill Ice Company, what used to be McKean Oil operates from. Uh, it is surrounded on the front by Blue Hills Parkway. It is surrounded on two sides, the northerly side and the westerly side, by Town of Milton land, conservation land, Pope's Pond, uh, and there is a row of houses that extends southerly from that property to Canton Avenue. That, uh, the owner is looking at, um, a, a, a reinvigoration of that property that would allow a new set of commercial uses or use to go in there, perhaps a mar, a small market that can serve the western part of town. There is no such amenity, uh, anywhere west and south of that, uh, property, perhaps a smaller version of a fruit center type. Again, would require process, would require consensus of butters and neighbors. We're responding to, to, uh, some requests we've received from people in the nearby area that we could really use a market, maybe someplace to sit and have a cup of coffee and enjoy the view of the, of, of the Pope's Pond and provide some access. Part of what this does, as it creates an overlay, would be to allow those types of uses to be incorporated into with really usable public green space. That rear portion of that property abuts the, the Pope's Pond Conservation Area. There's no way to access that from the property. There's a walking path, but wouldn't it be nice to think about some usable public space in the rear of that property that would connect directly to, like, from a, a commercial market type of use to that area? What this bylaw would do would allow these small property owners a process by which they could reinvest in their properties, um, in conjunction with the process necessary to get through the, the neighborhood, the precinct, this board, under standards that I think are pretty well established in this bylaw. And so in that regard, I would encourage the board to take each of these two bylaw, bylaws forward. I think they're important for discussion. I think clearly, uh, neighbors need to be aware of what the other possible locations are. I think the Metrakus Market on Pleasant Street is one, um, Ben's Cookie Factory would be another, um, the, the Tedeschi site on the corner of, of Randolph and Reed's Dale is another one, although that's just recently been, the Board of Appeals just did grant a permit for a dental office to go into the, the, the now vacant portion of the property that, uh, that's next to the Tedeschi's, and the Tedeschi's is there by reason of a long-term lease. They're not going anywhere, uh, and Seven-Eleven won't be going anywhere for a while. But there is a large portion of that property that is vacant, that is gravelled, where there used to be a gas station, and it might want to be reinvigorated by the owner, and a process that would allow them to do that, um, would be helpful. So, uh, I thank you for your time, and, um, I urge the board to move at least these two articles forward for discussion at town meeting.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, Marion, please come up. Welcome.
Good to see everybody. I'm Marion McKeatrick, um, and I'm also an attorney, and I do represent, um, Milton residents from time to time in zoning cases. So I, my, I'd like to start my comments with the nonconforming dimensions bylaw, and I don't know what format you want, but my basic question about this bylaw is, what is the purpose of this? And was, is, is it generated because recent cases have made it unclear as to how to apply Section 4A of the zoning bylaw, which applies to non, pre-existing nonconforming uses and structures? And it, I think, Alex, you drafted it, so was that the reason, or is there another reason?
So are you talking about the, there's two nonconforming
Nonconforming dimensions.
Dimensions.
It's a blissfully short bylaw.
Yes, I think it may be.
And I'm sure it has a purpose, you know, but I'm not, I, I didn't want to make comments until I understood the purpose.
Alex, please go ahead.
The purpose is that a variance isn't the right way to go because it isn't a variance. It should be a special permit procedure.
And the reason it's a variance is, I believe, because of some recent decisions that have
Well, no, because there, there is, uh, no special permit provision. How do you, how do you, how do you go into setback area? How do you expand these things if they're locked into a situation where there is no way to expand without encroaching on the setback? If you'd have to get a variance, it's hard to say there's something unique about the land which, you know, doesn't apply anywhere else. It, it does, it applies all over the place. Therefore, you make a special permit provision, uh, and that gives, the board would apply the same standards as it does now, but I've been, currently, these variances are issued with a wink, and, uh, this would be with some real legal cloud.
Well, I mean, I agree generally with you that, that that is what's happening and has happened for many years, and so it's realistic to say that we ought to establish a way to do this and understand what the standards are. Um, I'm, I'm going to write some further comments and send them to the board
Right.
Because I'm, I do find it, I am a little confused. I've done, I spent a lot of time studying Section 4A of our bylaw, and I've also studied a number of the recent cases. Uh, there are several, um, appeals court cases that have created a lot of confusion where there wasn't confusion before and seem to have led our building department in the direction of requiring variances in almost every case, or, or at least saying they have to apply for a variance. So I agree that there's a need for some, some drafting, um, and I'm, I don't really want to say much more, other than the fact that at the present time, what's been drafted is confusing for me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna prepare comments. They'll be available to you if you want to circulate them, that's fine. Um, I won't say any more about that. On the, the other bylaw that Ned Corcoran just got up and discussed with you, I thought he did a good job explaining why this has become an issue, why he's trying to think about it. Some of the same people he's talked to have talked to me. Some of these property owners, um, really the only alternative they have if they own a pre-existing nonconforming business in a residential area is they can go to the Board of Appeals, and they can apply for a special permit if they want to change slightly what's, what's there. Meaning that they can only use the same property in the same dimensions, but if they have a different use and if it's reasonably similar to the prior use, they can apply for a special permit. So they have a little bit of flexibility. It's not completely set in stone. The problem that I observe, and I, and I live, um, you know, between Blue Hill Ave and Blue Hill Parkway, I'm familiar with the Tedeschi's property, I'm familiar with what used to be Milton Food Mart, I'm familiar with the property along the Parkway, which is a fascinating property because it used to be an ice house originally, that commercial property. It's certainly not an ice house anymore. It evolved into an oil business for a long time. There's always been a combination of residential and, and commercial property there, which is really interesting. So it's sort of a pre-existing nonconforming mixed-use PUD that, that has no flexibility, but it's there. It's still a very difficult problem, knowing what the, the neighborhood would support as a change for that property, but it does need attention. All three of those properties do, and they're I, I agree with the comment that was made early, I think it was by Tim Curran, but I'm not sure, that every site that has this status should be on a list. I mean, I'm familiar with a lot of them because I hear about them or people ask me about them. Most people in Milton may not be familiar with where they are, and so that's going to be their first question. So I think if this is going to go forward at town meeting, that you should have a list of, of where you think it could possibly be applied. I did provide some comments back to Ned, and I will send them to you. Um, nothing very dramatic, but little changes here and there. The, the real question here is whether there will be enough support, um, at town meeting to make a zoning change to affect this type of redevelopment, or whether we're going to have to continue on this course of writing zoning for every site, which is what could be done for the ice house site if, if there isn't another alternative. It's just, uh, you know, slow and cumbersome, but it's, it's a problem. The public process that will happen if you pass the zoning will be the special permit hearing before the planning board, and it'll be complicated, and that any applicant will have to have support from the neighborhood to begin with for a plan they're going to put forward before they're going to have any chance of success with such a process. So I don't think there's quite as much to be feared from a zoning change as people may begin to think there is, uh, but I do think it's going to be a difficult process getting a special permit for any of these sites, even if the zoning is passed. I think that, um, you're not going to see huge, dramatic changes. These are in residential areas. People are only want to, are only going to want to see a change that will fit in with what they see now, and that's going to be difficult to come up with. But I'm in favor of, you know, having a discussion about this, this nonconforming business use zoning to see whether there's acceptance for the idea of trying to use zoning to make changes on some of the, improvements on some of these sites. As far as the other bylaw goes, um, I'm not sure whether I support it or I don't. I need to see language that I understand. I need to know, uh, what deficiencies in our current zoning, uh, this addresses and what our current zoning. I'll, I'll be writing you a memo about what I think you can do under current zoning now, and I'll, and about the cases, the recent cases. There are a lot of other zoning bylaws you're looking at. Um, I do think it's too much to bite off for one town meeting. I'm pretty sure you're not going to put all of these zoning proposals forward in October. I just want to say in the sign bylaw issue that it is very difficult to write a good sign bylaw, and if you are going to change what we have now, whatever you, you propose needs to be really carefully drafted and worked on. So I suspect from, I, I don't know, but it sounds like, I mean, that may not be ready yet. Um, I do have a concern, of course, because right now the process seems to be a little bit cumbersome. Um, I, it might be helpful if you made known at town meeting exactly what the concerns were that you heard about relating to signs, so that town meeting can decide whether it wants to do anything different with this temporary moratorium or whatever stage we're in where the, the plant, the, uh, boy, the selectmen now are holding full hearings for every sign, as I understand it. Every sign. I, I, that may be incorrect, but I think that's what they're doing. That's a pretty cumbersome process, and I think that, um, you need to keep in mind that if you don't think the sign bylaw is ready for this town meeting, then what does the planning board propose should be done between now and the next town meeting, in addition to continuing to review the, the current language and come up with something that is good. Um, and if I have other comments, I'll send you written. I do have other comments, but I'd, I'd like to send them in writing, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Can I just make a comment before Marion leaves?
Uh-huh.
On the nonconforming dimensions?
Yes.
Um, I am aware of, uh, residents in town where they have a pre-existing nonconforming dimensional issue, for example, height based on definition from grade to first floor. They cannot add an addition onto the home, even if it's fully compliant with all dimensional requirements, without a variance because they're non-compliant on the existing. And that's a burden for people that, we, we have a client that that's happened. They got, they went to the Board of Appeal and were granted a variance. However, that process is risky, right? Because somebody can sue or appeal that decision. This process would allow people to be able to reinvest in their homes that happened to fall with it, in this particular case, the way the topography on their lot is was different than the topography of their neighbors. So this is something that I, I have seen in several cases myself in town as an architect, and as the attorney on the other side, and Ned has seen the same thing. But I do think it's something that should be addressed and can be addressed, to make it easier and make the process easier for people to understand.
Yes, and, and what I would like to see is a really good introduction to the article, and it needs to be very well-written. The introduction, though, does need to explain some of this because it hasn't always been necessary to get a variance in order to do what you're talking about. There have been some cases in the last ten, five to ten years, two cases in particular, that have made it, have, have led us in that direction, and so that needs to be explained. You're going to get, you know, people will have different perspectives on this, and I, I'll give you my comments, maybe they'll be helpful, I hope so. Um, I certainly support making the process, um, more straightforward. I think that it, it was a special permit process until these cases arose, and, um, one of the particular problems that, that has arisen is that if a lot is pre-existing nonconforming, one of these cases has led to, to, to everybody having to go and seek a variance if they need a change in their structure on such a lot. That wasn't the way Milton interpreted its bylaw. We have a bylaw that covers all of those situations, in Section 4A, but the cases have created some confusion, and now the building inspector is requiring a variance in every case to be safe. But the problem is that it's not safe for the applicant, and I don't think it's really fair
Right.
in a lot of situations to require someone to go for a variance. So I'll, I'll give you my comments in more detail.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Amy Laine, um, Grafton Road, Grafton Ave, East Milton. So I just wanted to talk quickly about the sign bylaw. So I certainly support the sign bylaw. I think it is trying to address, um, the goals of the issues that have presented, been presented at several public meetings over the last, I think, two to three years, not just recently, but more aggressively recently. So I, I certainly think that there's been a lot of public comment on this over the past few years, and that it's been hard to get traction and movement, and I wanted to thank the board for taking this on and at least trying to move this forward. Um, I think that, I just wanted to, to, to mention, I think that the reason this is coming up is because there are signs in town that are in conflict with, with what's written in the master plan and what, what we think should be, or what is many, many citizens think is against what the ideas of how, how signs should be, um, implemented in, in the town. So I think, I think we've had signs that are kind of in conflict with that, and they're also in conflict with all of the businesses that, that do such a great job, abiding by the recommendations of the sign, sign committee booklet. So I think it's time to address this. You know, I don't know how we address it, and if the bylaw is written perfectly or not, you know, I think that's great, and the planning board can, can hash that out a little bit more, but if it's determined that this isn't something that can go forward for this town meeting, I think it's really important that we figure out what we do between, you know, between now and whenever we get something in place, because something is broken in the process. Um, and, and, you know, I think what we really want to say is we, we are, or from, from my standpoint, we're pro-business, and as Milton, we're, we're trying to, you know, a lot of the people that have been involved are sort of in the East Milton neighborhood. We, we want more businesses, we want to keep moving, and we don't want to stop people from, you know, we, we don't we're pro-business and as Milton, we're, we're trying to, you know, a lot of the people that have been involved are sort of in the East Milton neighborhood. We want more businesses, we want to keep moving and we don't want to stop people from, you know, we don't want to stop that process, we just want to make sure we're, we're figuring out how those businesses should be, you know, advertising their business in the town. So I think this is something we have to address and address quickly and if it can't be in the, you know, in the next town meeting. We had put a citizens article together and we had put a moratorium clause in. If, if we can, you know, if we can somehow figure out what we can present to make sure that we can put some kind of a moratorium while we're, we're spending time debating this issue, I think that's, that's really, really important.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Jenny?
Hi, my name's Denny Swenson, 65 Green Street, Milton.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, I'm relieved to hear that you're willing to consider further study on some or all of these. And my goal, like everyone else is here, is to provide, you know, ask for feedback and I intend it to be helpful and I hope it is. And I'm really happy to hear that everyone wants more of a collaborative approach. I, I know a number of the citizens were talking about that as well, so we would love to continue to be involved with that. I'm going to comment on four of the articles. Tim Kernan had read all of these two weeks ago and I couldn't keep up, so I'll just be commenting on four. The proposed non-conforming business use zoning, I, I like the sound of the purpose to encourage reinvestment and quality development. I was envisioning things that were possibly in rough shape that would get, you know, a nice boost and, and revitalize a neighborhood perhaps. But when I looked into how it could apply in my neighborhood or spots around town, I could see potential for unrestrained business development in residential neighborhoods. So that was one of the concerns I had. For instance, in our neighborhood, we have a psychiatrist and a home office. It's, works perfectly, it's comfortable, it's smooth, it's a perfect fit. But am I to understand that if they were to sell their house and a developer bought that house and the surrounding houses, could that turn into, you know, a mini-business district? And, you know, so I'm, I was looking for the limitations in the article and I felt that green space should be, the, the allocation for green space seemed inadequate to me. I didn't see anything about screening the view from residential neighbors. I didn't see that there was enough parking, but I did notice that if there wasn't enough parking, they could put parking in another spot in the neighborhood. Don't know if that's going to work. It may work in some neighborhoods and not others, but, so this business district could also be quite large and the design standards encourage large areas of glass and lighted display windows, which doesn't always fit the character of residential neighborhoods. And the goal is to, to put these business districts into residential districts. So anywhere there's non-conforming business use in a residential neighborhood is where these could potentially go. A list I was able to gather in my short time of looking were convenience stores, gas stations, the gas station on Canton Avenue, the equipment store on Canton Avenue, the old ice house, as I think Marion mentioned, there's a rehabilitation business on Blue Hills Parkway, Solomon Construction Yard on Blue Hill Ave, offices of various doctors, dentists, other professionals operating under this variance, Bent's Thatcher Farm, Newcombe Farms, the Copeland Complex, certain greenhouses and nurseries with variance protections. I'm not sure which ones, but my concern here is that the public hearing process did not include informing these neighborhoods and Marion had mentioned that too, that it, that would be critical, that these neighborhoods should be notified during the public process on this and should have a voice here so they can understand the potential impacts that the article could have and what their role would be in providing any limits. So it does, the article itself has very few limitations. It doesn't include any language for input from any neighborhood where this is proposed and their voice in shaping this or even saying this is totally inappropriate in a particular neighborhood should, should be heard, should hold a significant amount of weight. A good example would be, and it's hypothetical, but Thatcher Farm on Thatcher Street. If a developer offered to buy that at a price that the owner couldn't refuse, let's say, and put in a business district with, say, a pharmacy, mixed-use housing, maybe a dry cleaner, is that a win for the town? I don't know. I think that neighborhood would know better than I would know. Maybe they would welcome that, maybe they wouldn't. I don't see any language that truly brings the neighborhood into the process and I think it's really fascinating that both Ned and Marion picked up on that as well. So I had gone to some of the master plan meetings and I heard people say that they would be interested in small operations here and there, like maybe a coffee spot or a dry cleaning spot. And based on those sign photographs that Tim Chowinski, that, that presentation at the first summer workshop, I, I, I got the sense that, you know, Tim's analysis of the feedback was that it seemed that a lot of people were interested in that village feel, especially when it came to signage in that case, but I think there's a, there's a real desire from the citizens, at least the feedback we got from that, for mom and pop operations, that village, community, you know, approach. And the, the citizens seemed to be turned off by chain operations, you know, like that Verizon sign, a lot of people did not like that, or big, huge corporate signs. So, you know, on Thatcher Street, I can imagine they would probably not be interested in, you know, a chain operation going in there with lights and activity until 10 o'clock at night or something like that, but a small mom and pop, you know, a dry cleaner or a coffee stop, maybe, but again, you'd have to hear from Thatcher Street residents. And the concern is that this article could allow a business district to pop up almost anywhere and would only limit the size to how many houses were bought out by the developer. It could grow exponentially in size, as if, if I'm understanding this correctly. I think if this went through with this language and approach, you would have people all over town really upset with the way it was crafted and, and with so little tailoring for the residential neighborhoods that would be impacted. So I think a more surgical approach is needed, given the breadth of that, this proposal. I don't think it's ready for town meeting. I had some questions about the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. For discussion purposes, are we talking about in-law apartments, two families, three families, all of the above?
It was intended to be effectively coming along from the in-law apartment, the current in-law apartment bylaw.
So it would be in-law and possibly two-family?
That's where it started. The implications of the article are another matter and something we need to discuss because that was brought up as an issue, is whether or not it been allowed, effectively created a two-family.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the original intent was that it came out of the in-law apartment.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding, would this, would this contribute at all to the affordable housing unit count in any way, like the 40B count that we're trying to get to? Does it help us there?
Cheryl, do you want to, because this is the downside of taking responsibility for each article is I'll look to you for the answers.
At the moment, it does not, although there's been conversation about that because the intent of it in part, you know, the in-law is also to address the, the concern that we heard expressed about people, young families starting out and, and senior citizens who are having a hard time with the price points now that occur in Milton now and so staying in their homes, or people who grew up here and being able to, to find their first place here. So that was sort of the idea, was to address that, but we've had conversations, I did with Bill and with Joe Prondak, and there are some complications with getting it on the state inventory, so it's, right now, it's not in there. So that's, you know, a good question and something I think that we can look into.
I imagine it would be a long process and, and if you were to rent it, you might not get the rents you were looking for and so on. So I, I know that it would be a challenge, so I'm not, I'm not actually suggesting or pushing that. I was just wondering if that was part of the thinking for the, for the public knowledge. But the, the proposal is broad in that any homeowner, homeowner anywhere in town can add an accessory unit by way of right. That's very broad to anywhere, anyone. So it, the, the document doesn't have many controls or standards, it's just a broad, by way of right, everybody can kind of do this. I, I was wondering if, if we've looked at other towns that shifted from single-family housing to two-family housing and the reason I ask this is that some towns may have done this successfully and could we look at those towns and look at the limits and controls that they place on that type of zoning that were helpful in making that work and then even look at the towns where it didn't work and look at what their controls were, just as a kind of a, a measure and, and potentially there might be some good, so, good language in there that we could kind of, that's just a thought. I'd also be interested in an impact study of where and how this would impact the town. I, I think that would be important to know. It would be good to steer this sort of housing in a direction that would keep the neighborhoods intact and discourage shortcuts, our house flipping.
Yes.
At the expense of the neighborhoods. So I owned a house in Hanover before I moved to Milton and we had put in an in-law apartment and in Hanover, after 10 years, the town would have allowed me to grandfather that in-law apartment and it would become a 10-year, I mean, I'm sorry, it would become a, an official two-family at the 10-year mark. But, so that approach slowed people down who were interested in taking any shortcuts to make a quick flip, do you know what I mean? So that, but at the same time, it supported families who wanted to take in, you know, their parents or their kids and make an in-law type situation. So one, one is really geared toward community and, and the other is, is, so those are, that's just a thought. I think, I think we should study the impacts and come up with ways to help families that want in-law apartments, but learn the ways to put controls in place to minimize the negatives to the neighborhoods.
Can I just mention one thing about the controls, Emily? Just because the, the latest revision did, well, first of all, on one aspect of the control is that in addition to a home or conversion of a space above a garage or carriage house or something like that would require a special permit. And with that would be, drawings would have to be reviewed, site plan reviewed, et cetera. What, what's, would be allowed without having a special permit, the way it's written at the moment, is if it's within the home without any addition and not in a detached structure. And then the other thing is that when, in the latest round of revisions, there was a change made to say that it could not be implemented, this, this particular bylaw, in a property that was non-conforming in some fashion. So we did receive some comments about, from people in areas where they felt it was already dense and that some, a lot of those areas are already non-conforming, either in lot size or, or something else. So those were some controls that were put in, so you, you might look at that. But I also would just point out, for everyone who's interested in both the accessory dwelling and the including area zoning, the state had model bylaws and those were the starting point. And then for each one, I probably reviewed at least 10 other towns' bylaws that are in effect and there are a number of presentations also that I reviewed that, you know, to the lessons learned that people had put out. So if there's interest in a list of those and websites, I could put that list together and people could research that.
That would be part of the process that we'll talk about after the public hearing.
I wonder if that one you read, I'm not going to be able to talk to Mr. Reed after we leave his today, but, but I do think that it would be interesting to see what other towns did and any impact assessment I would be very interested in.
Denny, not to rush you, but at least one public hearing after this.
Okay, I, I only have two left. So the proposed bed and breakfast law, do we know the potential impacts on the town or neighborhoods to adding bed and breakfast? Has an impact study been done?
Impact study has not been done for all of this and again, that feeds into our questions about the process, so I appreciate that.
And so a homeowner can create up to 10 guest rooms and I was wondering how we arrived at the number of 10? Was it arbitrary or was there a?
Give me all your B and B questions, I'll answer them all at once.
Okay, that's it, that's it. Does, and does this help addressing 40B?
B and Bs do not help in addressing 40B, that's an easy one. 10, so right now, under the current zoning bylaw, you can rent up to three rooms. The original draft had four rooms for a B and B. I had a suggestion from one of the planning board members to up that to 10. When you submit zoning for being on the warrant, you can reduce the restrictions at town meeting, but you can't increase the restrictions at town meeting. It goes to the issue of whether or not the article's in scope. We talked a, a little bit about that earlier tonight. So I moved it up to 10 because I suspect, strongly suspected that town meeting was going to reduce it down again, but I wasn't entirely sure that four was enough of an incentive to have people to register their B and B breakfast, businesses.